Please can I welcome everyone to this meeting of the council in the council chamber at Castle Hill Winchester. Welcome especially to members of the public who have submitted questions to the council. Right, the first item of business this evening are the minutes of the previous meeting of the council. Members, the minutes of the ordinary meeting for the council held on the 22nd of February 2024, and your annual meeting of the council held on the 15th of May 2024, which is set out on pages seven to twelve, seven to twenty-seven of your agendas pack. Are these agreed as a correct record?
Agreed.
Thank you. Right, the next item of interest, the next item, the next agenda item is disclosures of interest. Are there any disclosures of interest to be made regarding the business before us this evening? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to disclose that as a member of Hampshire County Council, I have a non-prejudicial interest in any items on the agenda this evening. Thank you.
Yes, Mr Mayor, I would like to declare the same interest. Myself as well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. At agenda item number five, questions from members of the council. Question five refers to the University of Southampton, who are my employer. However, my role at the university is non-strategic or managerial, and I'm declaring this as a non pecuniary interest only. Thank you.
Right, the next agenda item is announcements. Members, I've been invited to a number of events across our district over the coming, coming months. Can I highlight just two of them which relate to two projects brought to fruition by council officers? On Sunday, the 28th of July, I'm attending the unveiling of a new memorial dedicated to local parishioners of St Morris's Church who lost their lives in the Great War. The date, curious enough, is also the 110th anniversary of the outbreak of the First World War. The second one is, on Thursday, the 1st of August, I will be helping to officially open the new George V playing field pavilion facility at Bar End. This impressive new facility on two levels will serve a variety of local needs, and particularly cricket and girls' football. I'd also like to mention two forthcoming charity events. Later this week, on Friday, the 19th, at 3pm, I'm leading a guided tour of Alsford on points of local history and interest in the town. Tickets are still available. If you go to the mayor's charity website, there's a link that takes you through to Ticket Source, and I would love to see some familiar faces there, and you will all learn a great deal. Now, on Saturday, the 3rd of August, I've, the charities, the mayor's charities, have arranged a family-friendly art session held at the Winchester Sea Cadets base at Worthy Down. And these are very good events, very entertaining for children. There's two sessions, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. And again, it, it, I'd love to see councillors and their children there. Please go to the, the, the charity, mayor's charity website, and you'll find a link to the tickets. Now, finally this evening, I'm very pleased to announce that in regard to the recent King's Birthday honours, I've written to some of the following recipients. Janet Lewis of Winchester, Deputy Director, Cabinet Office Legal Advisors, advisor, and an OBE for public service. David Andre Happy of Alsford, the Managing Director of TELINT, an MBE for services to telecommunications and to technology. Nicola Jane Isles of Winchester, Head of Special Project and Deputy Clerk to the Privy Council, an MBE for services to the Excession Council. And finally, Valerie Mary Etteridge of Winchester, a BEM for services to the community at Otterbourne. Now, Mr May Spera, thank you for accompanying me this afternoon, this evening. Right, Leader, do you have any announcements?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Quite a lot has changed since we last met. First of all, we have a new councillor, councillor Murphy, to whom, welcome. I hope you find your time on the council very rewarding and enjoyable. And indeed, I would make the same welcome on behalf of, I know, all the group leaders to all our new councillors, the five that were elected in May, I think, to say, I hope you find that this is a council way, and a council meeting where you feel able to contribute, and your opinions are valued. We have three new MPs to whom I have written on behalf of the council, congratulating them on their election, making clear that we are very open to working together on issues of common issues, common interest to our residents, just as I did with our former two MPs, informing them that we will be refreshing our council plan and ensuring them that their views will be welcome on issues that affect those parts of the constituent, of their constituency in our district, and highlighting the important role that local councils have in delivering for local people, and asking them to be advocates for this, for the new government. We also have new leaders in neighbouring authorities and at the county council. As I may have mentioned in previous meetings, I'm one of the three district leaders on Hampshire's prosperity board, and in that capacity have met and had preliminary discussions with the new leader of Hampshire, Nick Adams King, on the economic issues across our region, and particularly on his approach to the devolution discussions that the government announced today. Similarly, I've met the leader of Southampton to highlight our willingness to collaborate for similar reasons, since any devolution discussion will almost certainly involve them, and they are a very important economic partner to the Winchester district. I've called the new leader of Havant, councillor Philip Monday, and the deputy leader and I will be meeting him and his Assistant Cabinet Lead for a thriving Waterlooville, Antonio Harrison, alongside officers, to discuss how we continue the productive collaboration on Waterlooville issues that we had with the previous administration. And I've called the new executive leader of Farren, Simon Martin, and we will be catching up to discuss issues of common interest, such as wider Whiteley issues, since Whiteley sits on both in Farren and in, in the Winchester district, and health provision at Wellborn. We also have a new government. And this morning, I received a letter from the Deputy Prime Minister thanking all of us, I think it wasn't just to me, for the work that we all do to deliver the services that residents rely on, stressing that we will only be able to improve public services through economic growth, and highlighting the way forward for devolution deals in those areas that don't already have them. And I will circulate that letter to all members. And finally, for those who didn't make the briefing on Friday, we have also had a corporate peer challenge review. Thank you to everyone who took part, but actually, thank you to everyone for all the work you have done, whether in administration or opposition, or as a backbencher to get the feedback that we received. They described us as a high-performing council delivering for residents in the area, and made reference to us being well-run with good financial management, solid foundations in place for transformation, commitment to consultation and engagement, and impressive work on climate change. It highlights useful areas for improvements, and we will work across the chamber to develop an action plan in response. We should all be proud of the part we've played in the areas of strength that they highlighted, and I hope we can work together on the areas that we seek to improve. Most of all though, I would like to thank the chief executive and the wider officer team, as well as all the members, administration, backbench and opposition that have contributed towards the result that we received.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Good evening, members, and thank you, Leader. I'll pass those kind comments to the rest of the staff team. Members, just for me, apologies. Apologies for this evening's meeting have been received from councillors Becker, Bolton, Godfrey, Reach and Greenberg. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Right, the next agenda item is item four, questions from members of the public. I'd like to welcome again members of the public, well, at least a solitary member of public, who are here this evening and who have submitted questions for the council to answer. We've actually received two questions, and unfortunately, the second person, Wendy Wyatt, has unfortunately got Covid and is unable to appear in person. As is the custom, I will read out her question. Right, could I now call upon Steve Delmedge?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and good evening. I think I should preface my question by explaining that it's based on the experiences that I've got from within my parish, which is Duryll. My question is, is the SIL process fit for purpose? When certainly within our parish, some 50% of developments, typically single, but still imposing a load on the community infrastructure, appear not to have paid any SIL, despite it would appear also not having any SIL exemption?
Thank you. Thank you for your question, councillor Delmedge, and good to see you again. Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Thank you for your question, councillor Delmedge, and it's good to see you again. I know that you've taken up this matter with the planning department already, and there was a considerable correspondence about this in January, and then on for a little while after that. So you may be aware of the background to this levy, but just for everybody else's information, there are three zones covering South Hampshire strategic allocations, which are in areas where they're expected to attract 106 payments. Zone two covers Winchester town area and specific built-up areas in other parts of the district. And zone three covers the market towns and rural areas. So I actually sympathise with you, because Worthy's councillors also have a small development in our ward that didn't attract SIL despite it being within the ward in zone three. So there are occasions when it doesn't always work. The full detail of the SIL process, including the submissions and the inspector's report that was made in 2013, can be seen on Winchester's website, and I will part, I will forward you the long link to that. And in fact, these SIL zones were set up in 2014, following a submission to a planning inspector in 2013 under the previous administration. And I'm afraid at the moment it's rather costly to amend them. During the local plan process, we have considered revising the schedule, but the uncertain state of the government policy towards SIL at that time meant it was not cost-effective to proceed. The last government proposed an infrastructure levy to be conducted, collected after completion of a property, rather than at the application stage, and we didn't want any SIL review to be caught up in the new process and for it to be a wasted process. And the pilot has taken part, place of that ill review. I think it's proved to be ill conceived. Certainly, we will keep the decision under review. We've been actually looking at it almost every year. As soon as we have clarity on the government's plan, the new government's plan for infrastructure funding, we will look at it again. And we'll be in a position to decide whether to try and include a revised schedule in our new local plan, or in a paper following that, or whether it will need to be done after the new local plan is agreed. But we are constantly reviewing the necessity of having that, that SIL new schedule. So that's all I can say for you. All I can actually add is that one of the things we have done, and I know that you've had conversations with the officer, we hold her in the highest regard, and she, I would say, assiduously chases for every possible pound worth of SIL that we can get. So I can assure you, it's on no neglect on our part.
Thank you, councillor Porter. I guess my concern is, and I'd be interested in your views, that if Duryll is typical across the whole district, and I've no reason to suspect it's not, this is a huge revenue missed opportunity. When developments just seem to go on and no payment made as it should be, and then eventually they just time out, I think we're losing a great opportunity, don't you agree?
Thank you. Actually, I don't hear of it. If any other councillor hears of this being a problem in their own board, it would be useful to know that, because it isn't generally something that we receive complaints about. So I'm unaware of it at the moment. The one in our ward, there was an explanation for it, which we could understand. It was annoying, but we could understand it. But, so if anybody else here in the, in the room has any examples of this, we'd be pleased to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Porter, and to Steve Delmedge for your question. Can I please remind you that your question and the answer will be published on the council's website with the minutes of the meeting? Now, Mr Delmedge, if you would like to stay for the remainder of the meeting, you're very welcome, and a member of the staff will take you up to the public gallery if you so wish. Right, now the next question is from Wendy Wyatt, who, as I said, is unable to attend, so I have to, I will read it out. Right, the question is, the creative industries are a major economic driver, generating one in seven jobs. That's 2.4 million jobs, and contributing £125 billion to the UK economy. They have grown by 50% since 2010. Winchester is uniquely positioned to capitalise on this, with over 500 practising architects, a world-leading digital technology campus at IBM, two university campuses... a world-leading digital technology campus at IBM, two university campuses, and an exceptional sixth-form college which attracts students from across Hampshire and beyond. Winchester is home to significant creative talent, especially at the start-up stage. For example, Alice Daggett from the Winchester School of Art has just won the prestigious gold medal at Graduate Fashion Week and completed work experience with a local design business. A new film office is planned for Hampshire to attract inward investment, and there's a thriving visual arts and designer/maker sector across the district. It is important that we do not lose our talent to other areas, ensuring the Winchester district remains an innovative hub for the creative industries. There's a real opportunity to attract and retain the creative talent pipeline through creative enterprise zones, which can act as an important beacon for an area's creative growth. The Liberal Democrat manifesto supports the establishment of creative enterprise zones to grow and regenerate the cultural output of areas across the UK. And Labour has committed to sector support through their Creative Growth Plan. Given this, how will the Lib Dem-controlled Winchester City Council embed creative enterprise into future regeneration projects from a space, skills, sustainability, and leadership perspective? And will it consider establishing much-needed creative enterprise zones to act as an important beacon for the wider district? Would the cabinet member please respond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm sure the council would join with me in wishing Wendy Wyatt a speedy recovery. This administration is committed to doing all we can to encourage culture and the creative industries to thrive in our district. We recognise the valuable contribution arts and culture and the creative industries make to our communities, and it is precisely why we have spent resources on upgrading King's Walk to allow those small start-ups to flourish. As a city and district, we recognise that we have a real shortage of maker space, and going forward, we will be exploring how we can offer other opportunities for this type of space. For example, there are still other floors in King's Walk that could be put back into use. I have read about how London is taking a lead in this area and creating enterprise zones specifically to help support artists and the creative businesses, and this is exactly what we hope to achieve in central Winchester. Of course, in Winchester, our budget is completely different to that of a London borough. But, that said, should opportunities arise, we will certainly look to create other areas where this can be achieved. I completely agree that we need to encourage our homegrown creative talent to stay in our district, so being able to offer more facilities to allow them to do so is top of my agenda. Indeed, our aspirations around central Winchester regeneration specifically states that we wish to deliver a mixed development, which will include creative spaces together with community and cultural spaces. Over the past year, we have also invested significant time developing our new cultural strategy. This has been a shared vision for cultural development, which has been co-designed by stakeholders and partners from across our district and supported by Arts Council England. At its core, the vision states Winchester's district's creative dynamism enriches lives and makes amazing things happen. It aims to articulate Winchester district's culture offer and the benefits it provides to us all. It is worth noting that one of the key priorities is the economy and creative industries, together with the other three, namely education and young people, place-making, and events and festivals. So placing the creative industries at the heart of all we do, in terms of the value they bring to our communities and our regeneration projects, is central to this strategy. I am really excited that now this strategy has been developed, it gives us and our partners a really firm basis on which to build on what we already have across our district, and make sure that arts, culture, and the creative industries remain at the heart of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson, for your reply. The question and the answer will be published in the council's website within the minutes of the meeting. Right, the next item of business this evening is agenda item five, consideration and determination of the recommended minute of the scrutiny committee held on the 6th of February 2024. Mrs. Kirkman, would you please introduce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agenda item five is the recommended minute of the scrutiny committee held on the 6th of June 2024, and this is set out on your agenda on page 29 of your agenda pack. Report SC93 refers, and this is also included in your agenda pack on pages 31 to 45. The report's recommendation is for council to note the annual scrutiny report 2324. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Kirkman. Councillor Brook, would you move the recommended minute of the scrutiny committee, please?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Mayor, apologies. As it says in the report, scrutiny is about improving decision-making and ensuring that the decisions that are made are for the good of the residents, for the district, and for our council, and ensuring that the best strategic decisions are made on projects. Under the scrutiny banner, there are two policy committees, one focused on economy and housing, the other on health and environment, and these are both very much forward-looking committees who look at policy from an early stage. The main scrutiny committee can either be forward-looking or looking at retrospective decisions. And as part of the main scrutiny committee, we have continued to have a subcommittee of the performance panel during 2324. I would like to thank the members of all of these committees, and in particularly our performance panel, who have performed sterling jobs throughout the year. So thank you to all of those members. At the start of this municipal year, we received training to make the scrutiny even better through 2425, and ensure that we focus on the strategies behind performance and projects. I'd like to thank the chief exec, Mrs. Laura Taylor, for making this happen and for supporting the scrutiny throughout the previous year. I look forward to bringing forward even more scrutiny, some deeper dives on things through task and finish groups, and to ensuring that the council is held to account and is following the right paths. So with that, I commend this minute to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brook. Do you have a second?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I second the minute.
Thank you. Do you wish to reserve your right to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes.
Right, are there any questions? Sorry, I think I might have turned over two pages. No, sorry. Any questions? Right, thank you. Councillor Brook, do you wish to sum up?
It's all been said. Thank you.
Councillor Horle, do you wish to speak?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Really to support councillor Brook as the scrutiny chair, and to impress upon the council, and indeed all new members, and all of us, that it is incumbent upon us to have a thorough scrutiny process. The recent report from the peer review did indicate that we have some opportunities in this area, and I hope that we can work across the chamber to action those. And indeed, the scrutiny process does hopefully lead us to be a high-performing council, that we can all be reassured that the decisions are well-made and thoroughly discussed by all of us at the appropriate moment. And so, Mr. Mayor, I hope that we can all get behind the minute before us this evening and agree wholeheartedly with its passing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the recommended minute of the scrutiny committee, as set out in the agenda and on page 29 of the agenda pack, agreed? Could I see?
Agreed.
Agreed. Right, I think that's carried. Thank you. The next item of business this evening is the recruitment of independent persons. Mrs. Kirkman, would you please introduce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agenda item six is a report regarding the appointment of independent persons for the council. This appointment is vital in maintaining a high governance standard required under the Localism Act 2011, and full council is required to formally approve their appointment. Mr. Mayor, the recruitment process began with an advertisement back in March, and we received numerous applications by the closing date. Following a thorough shortlisting process, interviews were conducted in May, and I would like to thank councillors Becker, Chamberlain, Godfrey, and Power for their diligent work on the interview panel, assisted by the deputy monitoring officer. Following the interviews, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of three outstanding candidates as our new independent persons, Alan Harrison, Linda Phillips, and Peter Balf. Their expertise will undoubtedly strengthen our governance framework and ensure continued public confidence in our council's integrity. Mr. Mayor, I also wish to extend our sincere gratitude to Mr. Michael Cronin, who has served as an independent person since 2017. His dedication and contributions over the past seven years have been instrumental to our work, and we thank him for his service. Members, finally, to confirm, the recommendations for council are set out on your agenda. Report CL171 refers, and this is included on your agenda pack, pages 47 to 52. The report's recommendations are for council to make for three appointments and to formally note its gratitude to our outgoing independent person for his service. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Kirkman. Is there a proposal for the recommendation, please?
I'm proposing, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Power, do we have a second?
I am seconding, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I may very briefly, the role of the independent persons is invaluable to the standards regime, saving both officers and councillors an awful lot of time and providing that essential outside view. We were presented with excellent candidates, and we were very pleased to be able to appoint three such very useful people to do this job. I would also add that Michael Cronin, for many of those seven years, was our only independent person and was extremely generous with his time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Power. Are the recommendations, as set out at the end of report CL171, approved? Could I please have a show of hands? Right, thank you. Thank you. The next item of business this evening is agenda item seven, which is for the council to consider notices of motion. We have one motion this evening. The agenda sets out this evening's motion, which is to be moved by councillor Lee. Councillor Lee, do you have a second?
Councillor Wallace.
Councillor Wallace, do you reserve your right to speak?
Yes, please, Miss Matthew.
Councillor Lee, would you like to present your motion, please? Now I remind you, you've got a maximum of eight minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, esteemed colleagues and members of the public if they're listening. I won't read the motion ad verbatim, as I'm assuming you will have familiarised yourself with the key points and the proposed resolutions in the written motion. I will only therefore summarise the key points. The recent election of our new government provides a significant window of opportunity to highlight new possibilities for central and local government to do things better, especially with new working mechanisms, and hopefully better focused resource to accelerate local action on climate and nature. We know the current national approach for action on the climate and nature crises will need a reset if our struggling nature and wide environment is to be sustained in the face of rising global warming temperatures now consistently exceeding 1.5 degrees C and approaching 2 degrees. The government's net zero strategy indicates that around 82% of the UK's emissions are within the influence of local authorities. The LGA has also identified that local effort to achieve net zero are significantly more cost-effective and provide faster and greater financial returns compared to national approaches. Studies indicate local authorities could save the UK approximately £140 billion and deliver significant energy and social benefits through localised climate and nature initiatives, with an additional £400 billion in broader co-benefits. UK100, a network of local leaders, has stated local authorities are facing a Kafkaesque barrier to achieving net zero. It is also well-recognised that the most significant climate impacts affect our vulnerable populations, who are least equipped to adapt. Degregation of natural habitats not only harms community wellbeing, but also exacerbates climate change by releasing stored carbon. Restoration and protection of these habitats are essential for mitigating climate change and preserving plus enhancing our biodiversity. An enhanced local focus on climate and nature, supported by a government policy reset, could address these dual crises issues more equitably and promptly. Fortunately, we have an existing foundation for adding more enhancements, that's our Carbon Neutrality Action Plan, with ambitious targets to achieve net zero by the end of this year for this council and by 2030 for the district. This plan sits alongside our nature emergency declarations and resolutions. As a council, we are making progress to safeguard our environment, economy, and to ensure our sustainable future, but we know more enhanced collective effort and more local action could allow us to accelerate and deliver more. I therefore propose that the council resolves to urge the new government to form a partnership with councils to fast-track local decarbonisation with nature protection, restoration, and adaptation. And I request the council leader to write to our local MPs and encourage group leaders to lobby their national parties to support these initiatives in a revitalised national-local government relationship, and to ask Hampshire County Council to work closer with districts to accelerate the delivery of net zero and nature restoration. I urge you all to support this vital motion, and I look forward to the debate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lee. We now have 20 minutes to debate the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a lot to agree with in this motion. How could there not be? Most of it represents a watered-down version of the Liberal Democrat policies put forward by this administration, or outlined by the party's general election manifesto, or in the case of the third resolution, something the Liberal Democrats at Hampshire have already been working to achieve. Let's not forget that Winchester City Council... Let's not forget that Winchester City Council was ranked as the best council in Hampshire and the fifth best district in the country for its climate action plan by Climate Emergency UK on their council climate scorecard website. And what did Friends of the Earth say about Winchester Liberal Democrats' general election manifesto? The Liberal Democrats have much to be proud of. On climate, nature, homes and justice, they're making the bold pledges we need to see if we're to secure a better future for everyone in a way that's fast but fair, making sure that those with the most contribute the most. But even if this was just a motion that repeated Liberal Democrat policies, and if it did, it would be stronger, it still isn't right to pass it this evening. It might have been right to pass it before May the twenty-second, when the general election was called, or even before July the fourth. But we have a new government and new MPs who ran on new manifestos and have their own commitments to the public which we need to respect and which frankly deliver most, almost everything, if not everything, outlined in this motion. Most of these recommendations consist of asking people to do things they've already said they're going to do. I confess it feels odd to be asking a government that's been in place for twelve days for a government policy reset. I think they'd say that the British public voted for just that on July the fourth and they're getting on with it. We don't know everything about their policies, we'll find out more tomorrow. But we do know that Ed Miliband said when he set out his priorities as Secretary of State for Energy Security and Net Zero, that this will be a mission driven department mobilising citizens, businesses, trade unions, civil society and local government in a national effort where everyone has a role. Ed Miliband at least is already saying he's going to work with local government. And I could contact Winchester's MP about this motion, but I would just be reminding him of the Liberal Democrat manifesto that he ran on. That talks about handing more powers and resources to local councils for local net zero strategies. It talks about strengthening the powers of local authorities to monitor the health of our rivers, lakes and coastlines, restore our natural environment and tackle climate change. And while I'm sure the Conservative Party is going to be reviewing a lot more than just its policies, I'm not sure that a letter from me to our two Conservative MPs is going to be a particularly productive part of that process. I don't think that our relationship is quite at the point where I can be suggesting how their party can change its policies. Finally, we come to the recommendation regarding the county council. As most county councillors present will know, I proposed at February's full council that the county council accelerate the timing of its decarbonisation plan from 2050 to 2040. I have also been a frequent and public advocate of mainstreaming the climate emergency more strongly into their collaboration with the districts. I know that councillor Warwick will may even say, but she thinks that the current plan does the job. I happen to disagree, but it does no credit to the proposers of this motion to assume that Hampshire County councillors are not already seriously and actively discussing and considering the issues it outlines. Now, as most county councillors present will know, I lost the argument. The Conservative Party, the Labour Party and the independent group that the Green Party has just decided to join chose not to support a faster timing. So before telling the rest of us what to do, I suggest that the Green Party sorts out its own council group and get them to support Hampshire accelerating its work on climate change and nature restoration before lecturing the party that's actually done something to try and change it. So the Liberal Democrat group will not be supporting the motion this evening. It asks us to do nothing that we're not already doing or are already on the record as supporting. It asks the government and Liberal Democrat MPs to do what they're already advocating and have been elected to do. And it asks the council to push for something that your own group at the county council failed to support. That's no basis for Winchester City Council to support this motion and I ask you all to oppose it.
Thank you councillor Todd. Any other debate? Councillor Brophy.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Regarding the request to address our local MP as well, I've actually had the dubious privilege of painstakingly editing videos of Danny Chambers this week, including transcribing one of his recent thank you speeches into subtitles for inclusivity purposes. I'll read a section from his speech, actually one of the key parts, which is "We can be a country that takes the threat of climate change seriously and we will take meaningful action to protect our environment and our precious chalk streams. This is the fight that I'm going to take to Parliament every day for every one of you." So if that's any reassurance, I just want to pass on the message. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brophy. Councillor Pett.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm just astonished at the total absence from this motion of the role that the council already plays through its partnership with the South Downs National Park. And I would note in passing with great thanks the work our officers already do through that partnership. The park has recently reported that it is already over halfway to achieving its ten year target of ensuring thirty-three percent of its land is under active management for nature by 2030. By launching the Green Finance Initiative on the twenty-third of May, it became the first national park in the UK to open up a formal scheme for voluntary biodiversity net gain to the private sector. And within Winchester District, there are already two large renaturing schemes, the Wornford Park BNG scheme and White Bull Farm at Westmead that together with the work that the National Trust has underway at Hinton Ampter are contributing to renaturing on a large scale. I therefore regret that I cannot support this motion whilst it ignores such excellent work that's already being achieved in this area by this authority.
Thank you councillor Pett. Have you got any more? No, right. Councillor Wallace, would you like to exercise your right to reply?
Thank you, Miss Mayor. Right. Some interesting comments from my fellow councillors. It's interesting, during the election period, many voters expressed their frustration that the environment did not feature largely enough in debates around the country. And this was true for every party. The proposed motion raises the profile back up the agenda and also encourages a change in policy from the government. We have a different party in power, but it's still a change in policy from the government. Despite what we've been experiencing locally in the past few weeks, every month since June 2023, which is thirteen months in a row, has ranked as the planet's hottest since records began, compared with the corresponding month in previous years. In the twelve months ending in June, the world's average temperature was 1.64 degrees Celsius above the pre-industrial average. Already this year has seen the worst floods in decades in Kazakhstan and Russia, whilst countries from South East Asia to South America have been forced to ration water amid crippling water shortages due to severe drought. In America, extreme heat blanketed much of the US south and west, followed by Hurricane Beryl, the earliest a storm has ever reached the wind speeds of a category five hurricane. And it's not just surface temperatures. Fueled by climate change, the world's oceans have broken temperature records every single day over the past year. The superheated oceans have hit marine life hard and driven a new wave of coral bleaching. We cannot solve these issues on our own, but we can and should be making our contribution. This council has set a target of achieving net zero carbon emissions. This commitment was made to ensure that Winchester plays our part in achieving carbon reductions set out in the Paris Agreement. Failure to keep global heating to well below two degrees Celsius could result in tipping points, causing runaway global heating. Last September, the UK's Climate Change Committee found that the U-turns made by the government on important aspects of net zero policy, including delaying the phase out of diesel and petrol cars and of oil boilers and scrapping some proposed measures on home installation, would make it more difficult for the UK to meet its climate targets. Follow up research found the UK is likely to miss its climate targets by a wide margin. Then in May, the government was defeated in court for a second time for not doing enough to meet its targets for greenhouse gas emissions. We cannot keep delaying action and not expect consequences. The LGA has identified that local efforts to achieve net zero are significantly more cost effective and provide faster and greater financial returns compared to national approaches. The LGA are in fact encouraging councils to push forward with this approach and to encourage their groups and them to reach out to government to encourage more to be done locally. So it is confusing that when the LGA is saying this, that the council here is saying, the administration here is saying something different. Over half the emissions cuts requires decisions made at local level. Without a unifying plan, action is being stifled. There needs to be a local and national net zero delivery framework that supports seamless working and enhances partnerships between the UK government and local authorities. So let's raise the profile, encourage the government to work with local authorities on achieving the changes that are needed and accelerate delivery of net zero and nature restoration. I urge you to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wallace. I will now close this debate of councillor Lee's motion and ask him to exercise his right of reply to the debate.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. No surprise, I don't agree with some of what has been said this evening. It is by no means a lecture. I think I gave high praise to our Carbon Neutrality Action Plan, our nature resolution. And by no means did I infer that we weren't working with South Downs National Park or for that means any other stakeholder or partner. What I'm asking to do is to go faster and quicker. Yes, of course, in manifestos, there was a loud call for much more work in the areas of climate change. And I really do not agree with the leader. High confidence in a reset is overdone. And I don't believe it does any harm to reinforce the need to reset. We need tangible change in how we work together with central government. And to wait on the Women of Prayer with the King's Speech at the end of this week, well, fine. But I don't believe there's any harm to continue to say it again and again and again. The clock is ticking, we need to go faster and we need to reset how we do things. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lee. Right, members, is councillor Lee's motion agreed? Can I see a show of hands, please? Sorry. Sorry, all of those in favour first, please. All those against, please. Right. Oops, sorry. Sorry, is anyone abstaining? Thank you. Right, thank you, excuse my errors. I think the motion is not supported. Thank you. Right, members, the next item of business this evening is agenda item eight, changes to committee membership. Mrs Kirkman.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have not been notified of any changes to memberships of committees this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Kirkman. Right. Agenda item nine is questions from members of the council. Members who have submitted questions will be invited in turn to either read out their question or to refer to this as set out, which should be in the order paper, in the order that they are published on the council's website. A reminder also that our procedure is that only the questioner can ask one supplementary question and should indicate accordingly.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, just, sorry, just before we take this agenda item, just to note that I've noticed that in terms of disclosure of interests for question five, just say that I also have some employment with the University of Southampton. But similarly to Nathan, it's non-managerial and non-strategic and so it's a non pecuniary interest.
Councillor, members are reminded that our procedure rules allows that the total time occupied by questions and the answers and the supplementary questions shall not exceed forty minutes. Right, members, in turn, I shall invite you to ask your question and the cabinet member will respond. Can I ask that any supplementary question is succinct and to the point? As a reminder, the written answers will be published to the questions submitted on the websites and within the minutes. Right. Question number one.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question refers to the Hampshire Water Transfer and Waste Recycling Project and what I've titled as Concerns and Missed Opportunities. There are many concerns about this project. Absence in the proposed forty kilometre pipeline with a circa forty metre construction corridor of a comprehensive comparative analysis of the lifecycle environmental, community traffic and landowner disturbance impacts over an extensive period is manifest. The extremely high financial costs with other opportunities lost is again evident. Absence of a fully considered alternative option in this consultation for a new modern technology renewable energy desalination plant with less environmental harmful impacts to fix the western Hampshire's high water consumption area has not been taken forward. The current route south of Wickham, Bishopswaltham to Otterbourne lacks consideration of opportunities for emerging Winchester local cycling and walking infrastructure, the biodiversity net gain beyond statutory ten percent, addressing certainly in my area, poor broadband and mobile network coverage, local area energy plan grid enhancements for renewable energy connections, climate resilience and rising energy demands. Can Winchester council please consider taking action to propose an improved project option with smaller environmental and community impacts, with advocacy if the planned route must go ahead for relevant agencies to consider the identified opportunities and wider benefits? Thank you.
Could I call on councillor Porter, please?
Thank you. Winchester City Council isn't the planning authority for this project. We didn't make the application, so we're not in a position to change the permission or the scope of what's being done. The decisions are made through the Planning Inspectorate as a national infrastructure project, as you well know. Since there are eight sections of pipeline running through Winchester District, we are statutory consultees and so have already prepared our response that's going back to the deadline for submission, which is the twenty-third of July. I won't rehearse the full reply here, but Winchester City Council's response includes specific references and requests for each section and each construction compound and suggestions to what should be covered in the environmental statement submission and the Kemp, the construction management plan. I'm fully aware of the potential of the cycling route that's being discussed in the LCWIP and both in meetings for the LCWIP and member briefings about the pipeline. And this is included in our response specifically. As some of this route is actually tunneled rather than dug, it's difficult to see how other services as you suggest, for instance, the broadband and electricity, could be incorporated without considerable additions into this very constrained, financially constrained project. As you know, it has a set figure for the amount that's going to be spent. So we've noted the draft order limits have flexed in some areas to allow possibilities of change to the final plan and the placement of the pipeline following the environmental investigation assessments that are going to be done later this summer. We should see that in the next couple of months. So some of the points you highlight would be considered outside our area of competence at this point in time. And you may wish to actually take that up for yourself in your own response. And they've already been decided by the relevant regulatory bodies. As I said, we've no specific response back that's related to things that are outside our particular area. The choice of a pipeline was approved by Ofwat. Desalination was discounted at that time because of the environmental impacts and the limited amount of water that would be generated. And river abstraction, again, was discounted due to ecological impact. So at the moment, the process is basically as it's been. So at the moment, the process is basically as it's been applied through the or will be applied to the national infrastructure project, which I believe is going to go through next spring.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Do you have a supplementary question, please? Councillor Lee?
Yeah, thank you, councillor Porter. Of course, individual comments and concerns can be made to the consultation. Unfortunately, it seems to me that the train has left the station, and it's in that respect as well. I hope that you might have been able to say a bit more. Seventeen thousand six hundred and forty tonnes of carbon emissions from this project equivalent to loss of seven hundred and six thousand trees is not appropriate, given what we've been talking about this evening, and I would hope, given the strength of what the leader was saying this evening, lauding how good we are in highlighting the impact and how we will address them, that we might take a stronger stance on this. Can that be done? Thank you.
Councillor Porter?
As I said, we've made a very specific request to see the upgraded environmental statement, and we've also particularly commented on the lack of the very detailed construction environmental management plan, which we would expect to see and we would expect to comment on. In all of these nationally significant infrastructure projects, we have a series of statements of common ground. This one, we haven't actually started that statement of common ground process yet, but within that, there are opportunities to make comments about what we want to see, but bearing in mind, this project has already been agreed in principle by Ofwat, and so the design and the change of direction of it is extremely unlikely.
Thank you, councillor Porter.
Mr Chair, am I allowed a supplementary supplementary?
Right, question number two is from councillor Warwick.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, and sorry councillor Porter, I didn't phrase this very well, so I should have said, how do you think with the new government's mandatory one and a half million housing target, review of previously turned down planning applications and planning policy reform will impact on large housing site allocations across Winchester in our emerging local plan? Thank you.
Councillor Porter?
I guess rest after this one, councillor Warwick, so it'll be okay. Thank you for your question, councillor Warwick. Based on what we know so far, and obviously we'll probably know a little bit more tomorrow, we don't expect the government's mandatory targets to have any impact on large housing site allocations across Winchester in our local plan. The target of one point five million homes over the period of Parliament is the same as the previous target of three hundred thousand homes per year, which was set by the previous government. Winchester City Council has never shirked from achieving those numbers of homes required by the government, either in this administration or previous ones, so despite the talk of targets becoming optional, we have always continued to work within the government standard formula, as you well know. In fact, it may help our housing numbers if those mandatory targets are satisfied in other districts too. Many of the announcements made are actions we're already actually proposing. One is using brownfield land first, second is making homes energy efficient, third is generating power at every household, and the fourth is reducing water use. So the King's Speech is tomorrow, and we're promised a revised national planning framework by the end of July this year. Our strategic planning team has prepared a risk assessment of all of those potential changes, and we'll be publishing that with the scrutiny papers at the end of the week for councillor Brook's team. The greatest risk for us is not having a local plan, as you well know. With this plan and even with the move to mandatory targets, we can demonstrate a five-year housing supply and set out the areas which can be developed to deliver the housing number required, and that includes some large sites and are already developing larger sites. Within this, a number of larger sites are already identified, as we've said, and our local plan remains on target to be delivered for inspection before June twenty 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 five deadline.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Councillor Warwick, do you have a supplementary question?
I do, if I'm allowed, Mr Mayor. Thank you so much, councillor Porter. I know the announcements from government are coming thick and fast, and today, as the leader mentioned, the deputy prime minister announced she's very keen to promote combined authorities. So you're not going to know the answer to this necessarily, but does the portfolio hold a belief that this will put pressure on neighbouring push authorities such as Winchester to offer larger housing allocations over and above that proposed in our emerging local plan?
Councillor Porter?
I obviously can't promise, but I would suggest that if we're actually working to our mandatory targets, and they will split that one point five million homes over a number of authorities, then there is no reason, and we can provide a small buffer to make sure that we are covering any unforeseen failure to deliver, then there is absolutely no reason why we should be under any greater pressure than any other local authority.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Question number three, councillor Williams.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. The cabinet members will know how since being elected, I've spoken long about the urgent need of refurbishment for toilets in Bishopswaltham, the public toilets. I'm very pleased that the Liberal Democrat administration has committed to refurbishing these toilets as other local authorities close them, but can I ask, when can I inform residents and visitors to Bishopswaltham when the toilets specifically there will be refurbished?
Thank you, councillor Williams. Could I call on councillor Kelsey Lerni, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. After being delayed by difficulties in obtaining a contractor, the programme to refurbish the district's public toilets is now well underway, with Market Lane complete and Cheshwell Street car park toilets due to be finished in the coming week. It is intended to complete one of the park and ride facilities next, and we are starting work on the specification of the work needed to enable a start on Bishopswaltham public toilets in the autumn. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Bishopswaltham Parish Council for their constructive engagement with the city council over the future management of toilets, which is helping us to move forward with this much-needed refurbishment.
Thank you, councillor Lerni. Councillor Williams, do you have a supplementary?
No, just to thank the cabinet member for their response, and as a Bishopswaltham Parish councillor as well, I will pass on the thanks.
Question four, councillor White.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Organisers of a recent well-attended local fete in Newtown in the Meon Valley were very motivated to reduce waste as well as recycle as much as possible. However, although it seems that larger festivals and events are well catered for, with sustainable events advice and commercial companies that actually manage the waste for them, many local fete organisers have found very little help for this smaller community event. Is there a toolkit or guidance from the council specifically aimed at minimising waste at these local events, or help provided for fete organisers to recycle the waste generated, especially hard plastics?
Councillor Lerni, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Every event is different and will create different waste issues depending on purpose, size, location, catering offer, level of control by the organisers, and availability of waste disposal facilities. Event waste is commercial and not part of the city council's household waste stream, which has to be our priority, but we are still keen to encourage waste minimisation and recycling across the board. As part of Project Integra, we work with the county council, Hampshire unitaries, and other Hampshire districts to provide public information on waste, and new school and community guidance is included in the work of the Project Integra Communications Group. However, we are operating in a rapidly changing environment. The ban on single-use plastics, which came into place last year, has dramatically increased the availability of more sustainable alternatives for takeaway catering. The future introduction of extended producer responsibility is affecting how items are packaged, and the deposit return scheme will reduce drinks packaging in the waste stream and change the incentives for recycling. While these changes are very much to be welcomed, it is making simple guidance more difficult to provide as the waste system evolves, but we will be encouraging this to come forward as soon as possible.
Thank you, councillor Lerni. Councillor White, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. So you say that things are changing, things are coming down the line, but for event organisers, especially small ones, commercial companies aren't interested in helping them, they say you're too small to bother with. So what they really need, and because they're busy doing all the organising, they need just some simple guidelines, and there are other city councils that have produced simple toolkits, so would it be okay for me to share some of those ideas for future decisions?
Councillor Lerni?
I would be very happy to read information that's brought forward and obviously pass that on to the team that's working on this, but as I say, we are working in a rapidly evolving waste environment, and we do need to see what we need to do to keep that up to date and modernised. Event recycling is particularly problematic. Contamination rates tend to be very high with a lot of food waste and liquid produced as part of the waste stream. Issues like compostable coffee cups, which sound great, but you can't put them in the recycling as you can, card and plastic ones which can be recycled in appropriate facilities, and as I say, this is a rapidly moving environment. But I would say that the important thing is to encourage events organisers to look in particular at waste minimisation as always the first choice, rather than thinking about recycling.
Thank you, councillor Lerni. Question five is from councillor Godfrey, and he's had a written answer. Right, so that's done, right, okay. Question number six from councillor Laming.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Will the local plan be delayed due to the change in government and possible changes to the national housing policies?
Councillor Porter?
Thank you. If I recall at the last meeting, councillor Warwick and councillor Laming had very similar questions, and here we are again. So just to say, thank you for your question, councillor Laming. Based on what we know, the local plan will not be delayed due to the change in government. Throughout the process, officers and I have met with the Planning Advisering Service to ensure the plan is on track as new issues emerge, and then these have been addressed as we go. At the time of inspection, the plan must be compliant with the MPPF, as you know, in its agreed form, as it is at that time. So at this time, we've absolutely no idea of what changes to the MPPF will be made. We've got some guesses, but we're not certain, but if changes are made in the next month, as is implied, we will have time to address them in our local plan process.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Councillor Laming a supplementary?
Thank you. I'm afraid councillor Warwick stole most of my supplementary, so thank you.
Question seven, councillor Langford Smith.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. People in Denmead are very concerned about unapproved development that is changing the face of our countryside. Despite reporting issues to Winchester's enforcement team, there appears to be no action and cases disappear from the radar. How can you assure residents that enforcement has teeth in Denmead?
Councillor Porter?
Good evening, councillor Langford Smith, and thank you for your question. Winchester City Council is committed to rigorous enforcement. All parishes are invited to meet with the enforcement team, and that's what they send out on their notes every time they send out the lists, to go through their priorities for enforcement action in their parish, and of course, city councillors are welcome to join them if they come in. The enforcement team has had some success taking cases to the inspector, and we've had three specifically in the last year, two in October and one earlier this year, and they have been very serious cases which have taken our officers a long time to work through but have been very successful, and it's good to know that they've worked. Officers and I have also met with fellow Denmead parish councillor regarding one site of specific concern in your ward, but Winchester City Council always wants to do better. So following a well-attended parish councillors' workshop in late twenty twenty-three, Winchester City Council is revising its enforcement policy and will be briefing city councillors as part of that consultation towards its adoption this autumn, and I encourage you and any other city councillor to contact the enforcement team for direct for a briefing in the cases in your ward if you'd like.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Councillor Langford Smith, do you have any supplementary, please?
If I may. Thank you, councillor Porter, that's appreciated. On Forest Road towards Wells End, there is a development that had an enforcement notice in twenty seventeen that had a deadline of three months to restore it to farmland and remove the forty tonnes of concrete. It was ignored by the owner and subsequently not followed up by the enforcement team. As a direct result, we now have the development of all the fields around that one field with illegal waste processing, a dog park with rest facilities, which is actually new housing, one field has two separate accommodations. Several of the fields are now being covered with hardcore since they're in flood zone three. We have new buildings of twelve stables and many caravans, but the officers say it's fine since it only floods in winter and the caravans are only there during the summer. There has been one caravan in each of these fields that is inhabited year round. Planning permission for a park development was invited, as per process, but ignored by the owner and has now been dropped as not expedient to pursue. How can you assure residents that you will deal with the issues we face and preserve our precious countryside and the wildlife ecosystem? Thank you.
Councillor Porter?
Thank you. You will appreciate that I can't discuss a specific item at today's meeting, but just as with the previous one, we're very happy, the previous conversation with a colleague of yours, we're very happy to have that conversation in a session at Winchester City Council with the officers present. We've been really rather, it's been quite difficult over the last few months to do that because we're not allowed to do that as part of the pre-election period for the local elections and the general election, but very welcome to book in something for that very soon.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Right, question number eight, councillor Horrell.
Mr Mayor, thank you. The government has recently introduced new legislation for our council homes to ensure appropriate levels of tenant representation and satisfaction and KPIs, which the council will be measured on. Given this is a significant change and one which will impact most councillors who represent wards with council properties, why has the portfolio holder not arranged a member briefing to bring all councillors up to speed on this important new legislation? Thank you.
Councillor Westwood?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for your question, councillor Horrell. The report on how this council will meet the needs of the Social Housing Regulation Act was presented and agreed in public at the Cabinet Committee Housing Meeting Discussion on our Housing Engagement and Communication Plan, held on the fifth of February twenty twenty-four. This followed the earlier discussion of the forthcoming act and associated white paper at the Business and Housing Policy Committee on the twenty eighth of February twenty twenty three. All members had the opportunity to read the papers and associated recommendations prior to those meetings, and also had the opportunity to attend the meeting in person or join the live stream of the meeting or watch the recording after the meeting. As agreed with Business and Housing in twenty twenty-three, the primary focus of our engagement has been with tenants, but I had previously made it known to councillor Horrell that I intend to hold a that I intend to hold a member briefing on housing this calendar year. This has been delayed due to the general election and is now scheduled to happen on the 8th of October.
Thank you, councillor Westwood. Councillor Horrell, do you have a supplementary?
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for your answer, councillor Westwood, and for putting the briefing meeting in our diaries in the last week. That's most welcome. But I'm not as optimistic as you, councillor Westwood, that if we were to test the room this evening, all members would have the level of knowledge that I think we should try and achieve. And with our growing number of council homes, what training are you providing to ensure all councillors here, especially new councillors, understand what our housing service provides? One that we know is exemplary. How are we tackling our key strategic issues, particularly around temporary accommodation, and how the government will actually measure us against the set targets that we have to achieve? In all of this, councillor Westwood, I hope that you will take on board the desire for all of us to have exemplary knowledge in this key tenon of our council provision and that you will support that ever, the escalating of better training and understanding around the housing portfolio for all councillors. Would you agree? Thank you.
Councillor Westwood?
Thank you, councillor Horrell. And I thank you for that response and that question because I absolutely agree totally with you. As I look around this chamber and I look at the members here, I see some totally different faces to those that I saw just 15 months ago. There's been a significant change in the membership of this council in that period of time. And during my discussions with my own group and members of other groups, it's clear that the knowledge of housing activity and the knowledge of what housing actually does is quite thin in various places around the entire council, not just within your group or my group. So I agree exactly what you said. So following the briefing that I plan to hold on the 8th of October will not focus just on the Social Housing Regulation Act. I intend to run a briefing that will cover the broader aspects of the housing activity and portfolio. And following that briefing, I will happily consider further, more detailed briefings and indeed training, if necessary, in any areas of housing activity that are identified as being required following the briefing on the 8th of October. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Westwood. Councillor Brook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's frustration on all sides with the lack of specificity and relevance regarding the current KPIs that are set by the administration in relation to the strategic objectives of the council. Will the administration agree to an all-party task and finish group to be set up to discuss these KPIs and the delivery of contracts to achieve the administration's key objectives and to ensure they're monitored and delivered in time and in line with the desired outcomes?
Councillor Cutler?
Thank you, councillor Brook, for your question. The Scrutiny Committee on the 6th of March asked Cabinet to consider a full review of the fourth set of KPIs presented in the quarterly monitoring reports. I provided my response at Cabinet on the 14th of March, which was that the current strategic KPIs were agreed by Cabinet in December 22 and were tailored to the refreshed council plan. It was considered inappropriate to institute a full review of the KPIs with just one year left of the current council plan. However, I agreed to the Scrutiny Committee's request to include the fly-tipping clear-up rate as an additional KPI and also agreed to consider any other specific variations submitted by members. This was communicated to members in the Democratic Services Update on the 15th of March. No submissions were received, and the strategic KPIs for 2425 were adopted unchanged, save for the addition of the fly-tip clear-up rate at the Cabinet meeting on the 22nd of May. The current council plan runs to the end of this municipal year, and work will begin on the new five-year council plan later this year. It would be appropriate to run a full review of performance indicators in parallel with the development of the new council plan to ensure that we have a robust and relevant set of indicators to monitor the progress of the new plan. I'm happy to discuss with you, as Chair of the Scrutiny, the process for doing this.
Thank you, councillor Cutler. Councillor Brook, a supplementary?
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillor Cutler, for your response. I was also led to understand at that same scrutiny meeting that there would be a review of some of the KPIs in light of the new version of the performance reporting that was coming towards us and that would be coming along for us to scrutinise at future scrutiny committees. As per the training that we undertook, it's not just focusing on the KPIs, but if the KPIs aren't measuring the correct things, we're unable to properly identify whether a strategy behind it is working in order to effect change and ensure that our council effectively meets our targets. I welcome your opportunity to discuss KPIs going forwards in future. I think it's a shame that you will wait till the last local plan, something on which we, as the opposition, were not consulted on previously. So I welcome that discussion coming forwards imminently. Would you be happy to support that coming forwards sooner rather than later?
Councillor Cutler?
Well, I think it's appropriate that as we develop the new council plan that we, in parallel, work on the KPIs for that plan. And so it's it's not a matter of sooner rather than later. It's as the council plan is developing, we will put in place a programme for developing the KPIs at the same point. I would say that if we had agreed back in March to have a full review of the KPIs, we might have started in May. The election would have gotten away. Simon Howson certainly would have been working on the corporate peer challenge. We wouldn't have actually had a full review sorted by the end of, before the end of September. That would have only given us the last two quarters of the year. And I don't think it would have been an appropriate use of resources at the time. What's important is with the new plan that we get, you know, sort of a click, work together to create a clear and robust set of indicators. So I hope that we can work together on that.
Thank you, councillor Cutler. Question 10, councillor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When will the council administration listen to the residents and businesses about the impact of parking charges at weekends and evenings? They are driving customers away from the city and are thus impacting the viability of businesses and social and leisure activities.
Councillor Lerni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As promised when we introduced evening charges and changed Sunday charges to match the rest of the week, we continue to monitor the vitality of Winchester Town Centre, and we will keep parking charges under review. Free car parking remains available on Sundays and in the evenings, a short walk from the town centre. And for the rest of the week, we have kept down charges for park-and-ride and park-and-walk car parks. For those with a blue badge, parking is free at all times in our pay-and-display car parks, including those in the central parking area. The facts are clear. The latest independent figures provided by Winchester Bid show that despite the wet spring, footfall is up 5.5% in the year to May on the same period last year, with May footfall up 8.5%. For times we don't charge, we don't have figures on the number of those parking in the park-and-walk car parks. But as a resident of the town who regularly travels through Worthy Lane Car Park, I've seen much higher use in the evenings and on Sundays, and I am hearing the same with respect to Cheswell Car Park. The encouragement of edge-of-town parking rather than central car parks is a key part of the Winchester movement strategy. As a council, we agreed to take action to improve air quality and reduce traffic in the town centre and are seeing the behaviour change that is needed to make that happen without a drop in town centre footfall. The principal parking issue currently being raised with me as the Cabinet member responsible for transport by businesses is the difficulty for our small businesses and other organisations receiving deliveries and drop-offs caused by the heavy-handed on-street parking enforcement we are seeing from the county council.
Thank you, councillor Lerni. Councillor Miller, do you have a supplementary?
I do, please. Could you please confirm that there are no plans to introduce evening charges and weekend charges in the market towns? Because that definitely will affect their viability.
Simple answer, there are no plans.
Right, question 11, councillor Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What is the cutoff date for the decision to be made about buying carbon credits in order not to miss the 2024 target on carbon neutrality?
Councillor Lerni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Winchester City Council offsetting policy agreed in 2022 makes the purchase of carbon credits an option for the council, and supporting the generation of local carbon credits is a pathway in the current Carbon Neutrality Action Plan for achieving carbon neutrality. However, no decision has been or needs to be made about the purchase of carbon credits. The council has been making excellent progress towards the 2024 carbon neutrality target, and we maintain the goal of achieving carbon neutrality without the use of external carbon credits. Consultants Arcadian have been commissioned to investigate how we can increase carbon sequestration on city council land, and we look forward to their report.
Thank you, councillor Lerni. Councillor Cunningham, do you want to ask a supplementary?
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor. Buying credits is a licence to pollute at residents' expense. What measures will the administration put in place going forward to prevent this licence to pollute continuing?
Councillor Lerni?
Thank you. I think all action which increases carbon sequestration is to be welcomed. We hear a lot from other members of the council about nature-based solutions being a key way forward and a relatively economical way of achieving that. This is certainly the direction we are looking at. I do agree with you that carbon credits are very problematical, and that is why we would seek that any carbon credits we do seek to use internally, we are very clear what we are doing, what we are doing it for. And certainly, it is not the solution to dealing with large amounts of carbon.
Thank you, councillor Lerni. Right, question 12, councillor Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question refers to green economy development and sustainable prosperity in Winchester District. Our neighbouring M3 and Solent Local Enterprise partnerships are now being integrated into local authorities, M3 LEP in Hampshire and Surrey County Council. This split seems to be unhelpful at a pressing time for best transboundary coordination for sustainable economic development. It's hard to identify many disadvantages of the previous arrangements for local economic development following the abolishment of the South East Regional Development Agency, CEDA. Moving to even more hyper-local arrangements at a critical time for the need to accelerate joined-up green business transition and development seems unhelpful. So can I ask what steps are being taken to ensure this fragmentation of LEP processes and governance will not be allowed to undermine Winchester District's greener, faster economic development and wellbeing during the current economic climate and nature crises? Thank you.
Councillor Todd, please.
Thank you, councillor Lee, for your question. As announced at the beginning of the meeting, I am one of the three district leaders represented on Hampshire's Prosperity Partnership Board and raised the issue of ensuring strong collaboration with Hampshire's neighbours at every meeting of the Shadow Board before the formal board's establishment and have raised it at every meeting that we've had since. Similarly, I have raised the question of, perhaps provide a bit wider perspective for people who don't fully understand the terms we're talking about. So until the end of last financial year, we had two local enterprise partnerships. We had that covered the area of Hampshire. We had a Solent Enterprise Partnership, which is broadly south from here, included Portsmouth, Southampton and the Isle of Wight. And then we had an EM3, Enterprise M3 Local Enterprise Partnership, which we were part of, that included most of the authorities to the north and also about half of Surrey. That board was mainly business people, but there was a joint leaders' board of the council leaders in those particular areas. And then there was a meeting, we would hold a meeting, and some of us were then chosen to be on the main board. That was all wound up at the end of March, following a decision by the last government. And they were challenged to assemble a replacement based on local authority areas. It did not prove possible at the beginning of the process for Hampshire and the southern unitaries, Portsmouth, Southampton and the Isle of Wight, to come to an agreement for a joint arrangement. And so what we have now ended up with is that Portsmouth, Southampton and the Isle of Wight are in what is called the Solent, is it a Solent-based partnership? And the rest of Hampshire is in this partnership board that I talked about, which I sit on. There's a joint leaders' board that sits with it, where all the leaders get together and agree the view of the councils. And then three of us represent the district on the board, and it's chaired by the leader of Hampshire County Council. It's been very clear to all the leaders, if we look at the reality of our economy, that it's particularly important that we maintain that relationship with the Solent. And so I've raised it, as I said at the beginning, with the Prosperity Partnership Board. And broadly, the businesses on that board agree that it is important that we maintain that relationship, as indeed do the other council leaders, who aren't, or, you know, where we're in different parties. I've also spoken to the leaders of Southampton and Portsmouth and raised my concerns with them and said, we really have to find a solution to this. And actually, there is goodwill there. And I'm even in a, as part of the joint leaders' board, I'm even in a small WhatsApp group with the leader of Hampshire County Council and the leader of Test Valley, who are the two, who are the current local authority leaders in, on the partnership board as we work together to find a way forward. I've had confirmation today from, so if it's not possible to create a single organisation, one idea that I've floated to both sides is that we exchange board members or have an observer from one board on the other, so each knows what the other is doing. Now, I would say that the previous LEP arrangements were not perfect. We were required, this authority was required at one point to choose between joining the Enterprise M3 LEP and the Solent LEP. And a decision was made by the previous administration, a decision that I strongly support, I think it was the right decision, that we would partnership with the M3 LEP. But that arrangement meant that our, didn't do justice to the strong linkage between our own economy and the Southampton and Portsmouth area. Situation is now moving ahead. So I mentioned earlier today that I was sent an email by the Deputy Prime Minister about the plans, about local government in general, making reference to the fact that the areas that don't have deals or mayors or delegated authorities had been sent a, an email or a letter highlighting the new government's approach and their new approach towards how devolution is going to work. It is going to be a big priority, it will feature in the King's Speech tomorrow. As an indicator of how closely we all work as a team, I have had a copy of that email forwarded to me by the leader of Hampshire County Council. And he And he has confirmed that he is meeting with the leaders of Portsmouth, Southampton and the Isle of Wight and that we continue to work to see how we can find a way to collaborate together and ensure that as we work on our economic development, we do so in a way that recognises that business, employment, so many other things don't stop at local authority boundaries and that our ability to work across boundaries and to ensure that we integrate our plans together and achieve more than we can do on our own remains a very high priority for all the authorities.
Thank you councillor Todd for that comprehensive answer.
We didn't have another question, so.
Okay, have a supplementary one then, please. Just very quickly, you've described a matrix management process which is really quite hard to get your head around. And there could be a considerable amount of smoke and mirrors in what comes out of this. So can I, can I ask, will you be able to share with us members what this transparent process looks like once the dust is settled? I think it's very important for us to understand how this is all going to work. Thank you.
Councillor Todd.
Simple answer is yes. It's something that I've been doing at these meetings ever since I became leader. And as email correspondence goes on, as the plans get defined, certainly anything that I receive in my capacity as a member of the joint leaders' board that is appropriate, I will be more than happy to share with you. And similarly, any correspondence that I receive from central government or official correspondence that I receive from any of the other leaders.
Thank you councillor Todd. Right, I think that concludes the formal business of the evening. So I might ask the officers if they can turn off the broadcast.